Guys, we're gonna call our Monday, January the 22nd, 2024, 3:30 PM work session to order. Now that council, everybody is here, we're gonna do things a little bit differently today. The first thing on our work session is an executive session. We decided to put this first, to handle some business, to discuss the legal ramifications and the legal options for pending litigations, controversies not yet being litigated but imminently likely to be litigated, or imminently likely to be litigated if the governmental body pursues a proposed course of action. All right. As the city attorney, I, Marcus E. McDowell, I hereby request the Fairhope City Council go into executive session based on the Alabama Code 3625A783 to discuss the legal ramifications and legal options for pending litigation controversies not yet being litigated but imminently likely to be litigated, or imminently likely to be litigated if the governmental body pursues a proposed course of action. As a city attorney, I hereby request the City Council of the City of Fairhope rise from a regular work session meeting on Monday, January 22nd, 2024, to go into executive session. The City Council shall be in executive session for approximately one hour. At the end of the executive session, the City Council shall return to the City Council chambers to resume the regular work session meeting.
Move to going to executive session.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Welcome back. Sorry for the delay. We're gonna proceed with our regular work session agenda now. Next on the agenda is presentation by Principal John Cardwell of Fairhope High School.
Counsel President Martin, I was just gonna preface Principal Cardwell's presentation by letting you know this is the first of several presentations that will be done by each of the schools in our feeder pattern. This is in an effort for us to educate the general public just how well our schools are doing and what a great job they do. Also gives us a chance to talk about the Public Schools Commission and the three mil tax and what that money is doing in our schools. In the March-April issue of City Sketches, folks will get kind of a annual report talking about the three mil money, talking about what it can be used for, talking about the committee, and then given a brief synopsis too from each school. So this is again, just our way of communicating all the great things that are happening in our school system. Thank you.
Yeah, and to piggyback, I think the state of the city, we're gonna start incorporating the commission at the state of the city, they'll represent there. And Principal Cardwell is one of the principals that'll be coming to speak to us about this.
Thank you.
All right. Thank y'all for having me today. Got a little PowerPoint.
Joan, you have that PowerPoint?
Yeah, we sent it to Jenny. All right. Well, with a handout, if you wanna follow along with a handout, we could go ahead, we'll rock right along. First of all, let me tell you, I love going to principal meetings and talking to my fellow principals because they are so jealous of what we do here in Fairhope and how great the committee works and just the amount of support that we have. So I'm a really humble guy. I think if you know me, and I don't talk much to them about that, I'm lying. I rub it in their face every chance I get. So we wanna tell you guys, thank you so much for everything you're doing. Since PowerPoint's, we'll just go along with the presentation. I apologize for everyone out here. Some of the things we're doing, our three mil money, it's amazing what we're able, how many lives we're able to touch. First slide, the piano lab. The three mil, FEE helped out with the piano lab beginning with. Our three mil money has been able to supplement it. Every year with our piano lab, we have kids get scholarships. And they went from never playing the piano to joining our piano lab. And I've got a kid that's got, he's between Alabama Southern Miss and William Carey, I think, trying to decide where he's gonna go for a music scholarship. We're all about providing hope and opportunity, and that's just one example of what it, one of the things we do. Our engineering class, I wish you could see this, our engineering class has normally done moon buggy competitions, but this year, Cody Coleman is a creature of stealing things from around the campus. We had a golf cart that was having some axle problems, so they took on the project of developing an electric car. So they're going Friday to a competition in Jacksonville, Florida with this electric car that they built from scratch. So that's the perfect example of STEM and things that are going on in our school. It's Engineering III is amazing. Our dance class, Brooke Eubank brought her on this year, they've done multiple recitals. It's not a, they don't do a dance team, they do a dance collective. And that's funded by three mil money and K-1 Center money. We're still with that. So Brooke is amazing. We stole her from a school over in Mobile, and she is just, the girls are just flourishing under her. And our band, I'll have to tell you about our band, they're fantastic too. Art programs and things, but what I wanted to get to, well also, I left out, the picture's not in there, our Ag Science Department. We realized a couple of years ago that we were missing a group of kids of bringing them interest, so we started an Ag Science Department. We looked for a teacher for two years, finally found it. It is one of our most flourishing programs we have right now. We've got 150 kids, and we're on the waitlist. They're out there with chickens and goats. And I never thought as Principal Faro that I would have chickens and goats and donkeys on our campus, but here we are, and those kids are loving it. It's helping our vet science kids and giving them a taste of what it's really like to deal with animals, because everybody likes the idea of being a vet until they're out there shoveling and doing all that. So putting eggs in water to make the, chickens in water to make the egg come out, it's a whole different world for them.
I knew that we had one donkey out there.
Yeah. I've got jokes for that about myself out there looking at that donkey. It's just two of us looking at each other all the time. And one thing, and another service we do, and I don't know if anybody realizes this, we've got three driver ed teachers on campus, and that's, it sounds like a lot, and that's funded by the three mil committee. That is just done as a service for our community. Waiting in line to get a driver's license, if you've ever taken a 16-year-old up there, that's a day-long process. We do this because our kids get enough driving that we can give them the card to just go trade in for their license. They don't actually have to take the driving test because of our driver ed teachers, and we do that because we're lucky to have the funding we have. I can do that service for our families, because if you've ever done that weight, it's worth its money in gold, I can promise you. Now, one thing I wanna get to is data. Our ACT program, we hit the skids. COVID really hurt our school, our numbers dipped, and we realized we had to do something. I should've started with this. Stephanie Wainwright is my curriculum leader, she's back here. Stephanie is my data guru, pushes me, always has ideas. We developed, we knew that we had a problem with ACT. We dropped a little bit, and we wanted to give our kids better opportunity. We created an ACT prep program last year to where we started hitting them with practice tests and things. This year, we amped it up a little bit. Slide, I don't know what slide number it is, ACT Prep 2324. We created a 28-minute class in the middle of the day where all of our juniors have ACT prep provided for them. It's taught by English, math, science, and teachers, and they walk them through the ACT prep. And it's all to get them in a position to where they may not wanna go to college today, but then in four weeks, by God, they wanna go to college. So we're trying to make them understand the importance of, let's get that thing as high as we can to give you more opportunity as we progress. So this year, we've done a really good job rotating them through. We're anxious to see, the ACT's given in March at the school, so we're anxious to see we get them back in the summer, just how this plan has come together. Last year, our plan was a success, our writing scores went up, we were higher than our pre-COVID numbers, so we were back. And now we just wanna take it, that one more step up. So we're excited about that. Yes?
Real quick, now is that, is that paid for by the three mil as well?
It's not paid directly, but it gives me a teacher unit to where I've got room to. Because what we do is we'll take those teacher units, it gives me a chance, okay, take a class from this one, a class from this one. So that three mil money is the only way I'm able to do this.
And I wanna point out to the people that may be watching online, when we improve these ACT scores, it may be your child, or your grandchild, or somebody related to you, and they may get more scholarship money. And that's worth far more than any of that additional, that three mil tax. I tell you what, I worked on my son's score. It saved me a ton of money.
We're big on return of investment. If, you know, somebody says, well, we want this program, and I have to look at it and say, okay, what are my kids getting from that program? Every dollar we've invested in this ACT prep has come back fivefold. I think last year, we had 88 kids on campus that had a 30 or better on the ACT. If you have a 30 on the ACT, you're talking scholarship money. 32 at Auburn gets you good money. So that was our whole plan, was let's get them as high as we can. And we have kids, if they have a 28, they're mad. They want that 30. And we're giving them opportunity to do that. So yes, it's, the three mil has allowed me to invest in those kids and do more with it. So that's exactly right. With our sophomores, we're starting, what we'll do, the sophomores take a test called a pre-ACT in October, and then right after that, we start hitting them with some skills, ACT writing skills, giving them some prompts. And I'll explain more about why we wait till after that exam in just a minute. I'll try not to get frustrated when I explain that to you. You can look at the average ACT scores for Fairhope. They've kind of ballooned back up. A 21, when you look at it and you start thinking, oh, 21, I mean, that's not great. You got kids with 30. We test 425 kids on one day in April. It's in March this year though, isn't it, Steph?
It's March.
March. That one day, and it's not just the best kids, and it's not just the kids going to college, it's every single junior on our campus has to take the ACT. So when you average that together, a 21, 22 is really, really good. It's, and we'll talk more about that when I get into report cards. So we're pleased with what we've got, but we're always looking to move up. I'm not just attacking the kids from a 28 to a 30. We're looking at kids that score a 15, we want them to have an 18. And we want our 18s to have a 21. So our goal is to try to increase everyone's numbers, to get them to where if they wanna go to Bishop State and major in diesel engineering, that they can, they'll have that ACT score to get there. Not just the ones wanting to go to Vanderbilt or wanting to go to Auburn, Alabama. We're trying to put everybody in a position to succeed. If you've tried to find somebody to plum your house, and you understand getting a plumber there, we're pushing career tech, we're pushing all kinds of things on our campus, and it's just, it's a lot, but we don't ever give up. I do wanna skip a slide, let's go on down to average ACT scores by subject. You can look at that. All of our scores increased from the previous year, and from the previous two years, they've all jumped up. So our teachers are really, and I just wanna say, this, nothing to do with John Cardwell, all I do is hire good people and get out of their way. Our teachers are phenomenal. So, and you know, you've sent some kids through this school, and you know, we've got some winners. And it's a privilege for me to go to work every day. I love being at Fairhope High School. Everybody says, oh, would you go somewhere else? Nope, not enough money in the world for that. If you look at our state, Fairhope ACT state and national average, it's kind of misleading because there's only 15 states, I think 15 I believe, that use the ACT as a measure for their, getting their report card. It's, and it's tough because when you have kids that know they don't wanna go to college, I'm having to convince them that that one day, I need you, brother, I need you to do the best you can do. And that's a struggle with us because some of them are just like, eh, you know, what am I gonna do with this? So we're constantly having to coach them up on what, why this is important. And that's the frustrating part, because it is a college entrance exam that we're being graded on. Go to the report card page, I wanna walk you through this. I wanna talk, I talked to the superintendent's breakfast the other day about this, and I do wanna talk to you about report cards. It's so frustrating because they give you a report card number, and that's what's published. We had a 91. Last year, it was an 83, because we got hit with COVID, it dropped, focus was gone, we pulled it back up to a 91. But I wanna tell you what the report card is based on. You get, here's the first one, academic growth. In 10th grade, every kid takes the pre-ACT. I'll use a little girl, we'll call her Lena, brilliant girl, made a 35 on her 10th grade pre-ACT. That same group has to take the ACT the next year. If she didn't make a 36 on that, I don't get credit in the academic growth section of that report card. So the way the state has it, they have to show growth from 10th grade to 11th grade. Now, what I wanna do is go in there and say, God's sake, don't try your best, you're killing me. But we never say that. But that's what's so frustrating, and that's what we use as a target, but it's so frustrating for those kids like Sanders and Lena, all them, they're doing their best in 10th grade, well then there's no room for growth. Jimmy, I'm looking at you too, your daughter killed me too on that. But it's just, that's the frustrating part about academic growth on that. The most important one to me is academic achievement, and it's the one the state gives the least amount of importance to. Because academic achievement is a measure of what every one of our kids is doing in school, not growth from 10 to 11, but what they're doing on the ACT. Here's the part that's so, that I needed, I would like to shout at the State Department about. My report card, I'm graded on attendance of kids coming to my school. If they have 18 or more absences, then they give me a ding on my report card. Well, I had a kid last year that was fighting cancer. He had more than 18 absences, doctor excuses don't count. So I got dinged on my report card for chronic absenteeism for attendance from kids that are ill and all that. So that's the frustrating part. That being said, we still, we play their game, and we get it done. But I did wanna tell you, when you see a report card, there are different tells that you look at. Don't get so caught up in that one number, and I told him this at the breakfast the other day. Schools are doing fantastic things, but that one report card from the state, oh, and by the way, they dropped me 2%. And a couple of months ago, they just decided, oh, we're gonna drop everybody 2%. Why? They hadn't told us yet. So that's the frustrating part. Not making excuses, because 91 will be higher next year, I don't have any doubt because of what we're doing. But I did wanna share the last two slides with you. The first slide.
Can I point out something?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm proud of you. You know, you pointed out that academic achievement is paramount, and you're number four.
Yes. You stole my thunder, Jack.
And two of the schools ahead of you are magnet schools.
Two magnet schools, and then Mountain Brook and Vestavia, and then Fairhope High School. When you start talking about academic achievement, state Alabama, and you rank behind those, a magnet school, and I beat magnet schools by the way, I don't know if you saw that on there, they get to pick and choose who comes to their school. I don't have, I don't have the luxury of saying, no, I'll take you, but I'm not gonna take you. I'd never want that luxury, I don't like that. But the very idea that Fairhope High School scored behind two magnet schools, Mountain Brook, Vestavia, and then us, I can't be prouder. And I'll tell you this, you should be super proud of what these teachers and these kids are doing in our schools, because that is amazing to me. And that's just, and I'll tell you this, that's a testament to the resources that we're provided to. Athletically, academically, and the arts, everything that Fairhope does for us allows us to excel in everything we do. So for that, I just wanna thank all of you. But I wanted to end with that one, I made and printed that in color so you could hold on to it, because that one is, that's something we're very proud of. And also, you can look and see what the other schools are doing. Graduation rate, I was gonna tell you this, the only way to fix attendance, I always laugh at this, is to withhold their credit. Well, if you withhold their credit, then your graduation rate's gonna go down. So you're kind of in a double-edged sword here, what do you do? But I do wanna thank you for everything you do for us, and I'm gonna wrap up with that. Does anyone have any questions about Fairhope High School? I wish you could come out and just walk around one day and just see all the great things that they've got going on right now.
No, John, I just wanted, you guys do an excellent job. You know, I see you guys all the time in the commission, and I don't know if a lot of people get a chance with their busy lives to actually venture into your world, but your world is impressive. Like what you deal with, the things that you handle, so God bless you, man, keep, continue to do what you're doing. You know, we love you, man, appreciate you.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Thank you, guys.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, guys. All right, next on the agenda, we have a discussion of a RACE grant for bridges to replace a box culvert over Fly Creek, US Highway 98, and that'll be Ms. Love, I don't know if she's, Richard's gonna do it. Hey, yeah. You shaved, man.
I did.
Yeah.
Thank you. Nicole had to take her son to the doctor, and she's on her way, but I can at least be a poor substitute. And I know that there's been a little bit of conversation one-on-one. Just a quick bit of background, as you know, there was a pretty significant structural failure of the box culvert crossing of Fly Creek at US 98. I think Councilman Conyers was the one that at least was made aware of it, and then I went out there and said, uh-oh. And ALDOT's been a pretty good amount of effort to do a temporary shoring up, but there is a significant structural problem with that crossing. One of the things that ALDOT was required to do when they were looking at a long-term solution to the repair for that problem was to do, conduct an alternative analysis. And just not to get too far in the weeds, but in today's design age, that crossing would never have allowed to be built the way it is today, meaning that we've learned that box culverts and active stream systems are a very poor mix, and there's a lot of unintended consequences. But if we go back 50 years, it was considered the best technology that there was, and that was what was used. And in their alternative analysis, they came out that a bridge system there would be a better solution for a long-term fix that would not only address environmental concerns, the health and physical properties of the stream crossing itself, as well as bridges proved to be a better investment over time as far as their lifespans and the cost of maintenance and things of that nature. But one of the challenges was, even though their permanent repair solution was prohibitively expensive, bridges were a little bit more. And that led to ALDOT conducting some stakeholder meetings, and there was no doubt that, I think the, most of the stakeholders, a lot of them having environmental concern, were much in favor of a bridge system, but money being the berry to that. And then, all of a sudden, this opportunity for this RACE grant presents itself, and the discussion continued. And ALDOT had a simple request, because of their kind of investment in the Mobile River Bridge project, they did not wanna be a competitor for money with themselves, and they asked if there would be an interest or willingness of the city to be the face of the applicant for this RACE grant, particularly to put bridges in as the permanent repair of the stream crossing. And as you can see in the notes, the RACE grant is anywhere, can be anywhere from 5 to up to 25 million. They've identified that the bridge is significantly less than 20, but it's one of those cases you ask for more than you need to make sure that if it drags out, that you have enough to do it. And ALDOT has made a commitment that they would be responsible for the match, as well as any project overruns. And what we would like to ask of you is permission to use staff resources only to work with ALDOT and the other stakeholders to complete and submit this grant, with the hope of in June finding out that we would be funded to put bridges in if that crosses versus fixing a box culvert that's gonna have continued long-term maintenance challenges as we go forward. And I'd be glad, I see that Nicole made it in, to answer any questions, but really, our commitment would be just to be a facilitator, and ultimately, if the grant were rewarded, we would just be a pass-through agency to do that. And I think probably the other biggest note, as you are well aware of, is that Mobile NEP received a significant GOMESA grant for a stream restoration along this reach of Fly Creek. And really, if there is a bridge there, that stream restoration can truly be a restoration project versus just trying to address the damage that the box culvert has caused and try to mitigate it. But you'd never reconnect the upper reach of the stream to the lower reach where our property starts if there's still a box culvert there. So I think it's a worthy endeavor. It's probably a low percentage shot, but we would like your blessing to come back for you with a resolution authorizing us to apply for this grant as stated.
Yeah. Counsel, this is, I don't know, Nicole, if you wanted to say anything, I see you made it, I'm glad you made it safely. But I think this is something that has come to us before, counsel, but that, Mobile NEP got 2.75 million, that 2.75 million wouldn't have helped them from what the work they had to do. So I think this bridge is the hope that we're praying for with this money, the 20 million. It's an 80/20 match, just to go into a couple of details, it's an 80/20 match. ALDOT has sent a letter of commitment for the 20%, which is $4 million. You know, we're just a pass-through, we're just a face for this particular deal, so it's a win-win for everybody that's in partnership for this, and especially for our creation, God-given, our environment. So I think it's a good deal. Nicole, did you have anything to expand as far as, did I cover it all? Pretty much?
No, Richard covered it all.
Richard covered it all, okay. Any questions, counsel, as far as this is concerned?
This comment is that, you know, and Richard stated it already, is that, you know, by building the bridge, you're basically, you know, you're protecting what they're trying to restore. If you put the box culvert back in, it's a potential that it goes right back to what it is now, which is, it's a lot less navigable than it was, you know, 20, 30, 50 years ago, 75 years ago. And it's just getting it back more to nature, which has been a plan for that location for at least as long as I've been on the council.
Since 2013, really, that was when the first study was done, I think, on that.
So I'm in favor of it as well.
Yeah. And RACE, the RACE stands for Rebuild America Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity Program. Is the RACE, is an acronym for all those that are wondering, what's a RACE grant? I said the same thing, so. I know many people that are listening and watching are asking, what's a RACE grant? So that's what a RACE grant is. All right, guys. Anybody else, counsel, as far as the RACE grant? It's a good thing.
In favor of it as well?
So we'll push that towards the next agenda, get it going. All right. Agenda item number four is the discussion of the Historic Preservation Ordinance. I think we have some members of the historical preservation, and also.
Hi, my name's Amy Ford Molyneux, and I'm a member of the City Historic Preservation Committee. And on behalf of my fellow committee members, I just wanna say thank you for working with us regarding the city's proposed historic preservation ordinance. I also wanna express our thanks and gratitude to Chris Williams, Eric Cortinas, Michelle Melton, Hunter Simmons, and Jay Robinson for their collaboration as well. So our ordinance represents a true team effort. It's forged through months of research, spirited discussions, and many meetings. We've worked diligently to craft a document that respects the unique character of Fairhope while upholding individual property owner rights. At its core, this ordinance aims to secure certified local government status, or CLG status, for Fairhope. This opens doors to valuable grant funding, allowing us to better preserve our historic structures and enhance the community for residents and visitors alike. It's important to note that the ordinance isn't a rigid, one-size-fits-all solution. We understand that historic preservation isn't always about saving entire structures. Sometimes just salvaging architectural elements or building facades can hold immense value. Fairhope holds a special place in my heart. I've lived here since birth, and I've witnessed the transformation from a sleepy basetown with plenty of empty downtown parking spaces to a thriving cultural hub. People flock here because Fairhope offers an exceptional quality of life. It's a great place to raise a family, run a business, or spend your golden years of retirement. Growing up in this special place, I was also fortunate to have Mike Ford as my father. Some of you may have known him or even served alongside him on the city council. I mention him because historic preservation has been a cornerstone conversation among our city leaders since the late 1980s. And I know this firsthand because I brought a brochure he helped create, because he saved everything. But it highlighted Fairhope's historic treasures. But think about that, it's an issue we've been discussing for nearly four decades. So we think it's time to, you know, bring attention to it. We know that change is inevitable, and Fairhope is evolving at a rapid pace. Sadly, historically significant properties are being lost. Our downtown boasts diverse architectural styles, remnants of the single tax colony era, and charming neighborhoods like the fruit and nut section. Without safeguarding some of these structures, we risk losing the very essence that makes Fairhope unique. We risk becoming just another town, bland, characterless, and unremarkable. So this ordinance presents a crucial opportunity to shape the future for generations to come. As a parent, I shudder at the thought of my child saying, Fairhope doesn't look like the town I grew up in anymore. So we have the power to preserve the essence of Fairhope, this utopia that we all call home. Please consider passing the proposed ordinance. Please consider passing the proposed ordinance with the suggested amendments. I want to thank you all again for your collaboration and consideration of the ordinance and we welcome any comments or questions, but I'll probably defer to Chris Williams for the legal, since he's the legal brains of the bunch, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Chris, did you want to say anything or speak on anything as far as what we have?
Sure, I can answer any questions. I would just say, based on our last discussion at the council executive session, or excuse me, work session, our instruction was to go back to sit down with the committee members to refine the previous version of the ordinance, take out some of the things that may have been unnecessary or not required by the statute. You may recall what we were trying to accomplish is meshing of the legislation that authorized the commission, coupled with making sure we got CLG status. And the Alabama Historical Commission had a sample ordinance that did provide a lot of the requirements. We were trying to blend that with what the statute required, as well as what seemed to be functional and workable for the city with obviously the committee's input and suggested revisions and concerns being addressed. So we've had multiple meetings outside, I have, with several of the committee members in this proposed version and its form. I believe they're in favor of and agreeable to. And in my opinion, it complies with what the state requires and it all is consistent with what CLG status would require from the Alabama Historical Commission, so.
Yeah, and I, Chris, I appreciate everything you did and that, and obviously the committee working together to get that done because it's not, I don't think that sounded easy, but it was definitely harder than Chris and Amy just made it sound. I mean, trying to figure out that perfect pocket to where it says what it needs to say to accomplish the CLG status, which is sort of the main impetus of doing this right now, but also not containing all of these sort of overreaching things that are in sort of, I think, the boilerplate agreement while also fitting in with what we think the council's going to want to see in this. And I think that's where you guys got it to and so I'm really proud of what you were able to do to get it here because I think it's in the right spot to move it forward. So good job to all of you because it's not an easy thing to put this together. And I'll say, I think even me having seen it in really a lot of its early stages, the hard part for me is when you read some of the powers of the commission, and we talked about this at a couple of the meetings, it seems really broad and it seems like it gives the authority to do almost any and everything, but I think the way it's listed now, I think the focus is still on is surveying, education, funding, research, and then advising the council and making recommendations to the council on how to proceed on certain areas. And I think we have the opportunity to amend this as we move forward and decide that there are things maybe we want you to do or maybe things that you don't want to do or ways just to simply do it better. And so I think this is a really good starting spot to just get the ball rolling, to get us, to move us forward in what we're trying to accomplish.
Thank you, Jay, Councilman Robinson. There were a couple of things that I was reading in here, I guess this is the time to discuss, I don't know if anybody else has read over this thing, but the 45 days, is that something, I know that was something we talked about where if something doesn't happen in 45 days, "Commission failure to commit the act within 45 days shall constitute approval and no other evidence of approval shall be needed. An applicant requesting a delay or commission adopted motion to hold over an application shall relieve the commission of the 45-day deadline." There was something in there where it seems like that could be a loophole and I thought that came up once before with the 45 days to where, you know, if something, if we didn't get something done in 45 days, that it was null and void, that they would have access to whatever that thing was. I'm just being real bland right now, but.
Sure.
Is that something that, I thought we talked about taking that or increasing or kind of thinking about that language?
No, and that language came from the model ordinance, although I think it may have originally said 30 days and we expanded it to 45. The idea being similar to like a planning commission meeting, if they're meeting regularly, monthly, they have a decision that has to be made, maybe, you know, in the planning commission context, sometimes the meetings don't fall every 30 days, sometimes it's 35 days or 32 days depending on how the calendar is, so giving a little room, but the decisions have to be made at the public meeting by the planning, excuse me, by the historic commission if this is enacted. And so that language was trying to make sure it kept moving along, but also give the flexibility for meeting the monthly meeting requirements.
Okay.
Did that answer your question, council president?
Yeah, I think so. It's just, when it says failure of the commission to act within, I guess that means that we don't do anything, we don't have a meeting, we just sit subordinate, we're not doing anything. Is that, I just want to make sure, because the way it writes is if we don't act within that 45 days on a decision, where I'm reading it, then it's null and void, then they can, whatever that issue was, it goes through. It's approval or rejection of application for certification of appropriateness.
Yeah, and to be clear, what that is, is that would be, you know, let's remind everyone of the process, so we're all on the same page. So the commission would do a survey, they would potentially identify either districts or properties of significance that would be sought to be protected by this ordinance. They would have to come to council, they'd have a recommendation by the commission that would have to come to council with a public hearing and the property owners and the neighbors and everyone have the opportunity to speak. Only then could council enact an ordinance that would establish either historic property or a historic district with protection. And so what council president, you're reading from is after that's in place, so say Jay's house is designated a historic property, if he wanted to make certain changes.
As it should be.
He would have to come before the commission to obtain a certificate of appropriateness to make those changes. And so that is allowing the property, there's a timeline in there to allow the property owner to not have to wait indefinitely to help act, but that only becomes effective once a certain property or a certain district is established.
Yeah, okay. I'm just, yeah, I get it, it's just that I was just, if we don't make a decision in 45 days, whatever that they wanted to do, they can do.
Correct. If they apply for a certificate of appropriateness, if the commission were not to act within 45 days, it would be deemed approved and they could proceed with making the changes.
It's just the default setting, basically.
Correct.
You've got to have something to move it along.
Correct. And you can't have the property owner waiting perpetuity to.
And by that point, they've already been through at least a couple of steps to even get to there.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay, all right. All right, yeah. Anything else, counsel? There's a couple of things, but we can talk about that off. Anything else, guys, as far as historical preservation? All right.
And I would just note, just finally, let you all move on, but, you know, for CLG status, council does need to appreciate that the city is going to need to have some sort of employee either in-house or a contract, you know, a contractor to be the representative and liaison between the commission, the council, and the state office. And so that is one of the CLG requirements. And also in terms of the ordinance itself, we would need, y'all would need to establish kind of the timeframe of what day of the week, day of the month, you know, that would be set forth in the ordinance, but right now there's blanks. So, you know, prior to being enacted, we'd have to make sure y'all landed on that for using the meeting space and that sort of thing as well.
Yeah, and I, yeah, and there's a lot for that person to do in here that looks like money. So that was a budgetary item that we would have to think about as we move forward. I'm gonna go ahead, there's another H on guidelines, a criteria for certificate of appropriateness. I guess that's page 10. It didn't really state if council was involved in that particular opportunity or process. I wrote a little note on here, is council involved?
Council is not involved in that process. Council would be involved in the designation of a historic property or historic district, which then the property owner would seek a certificate of appropriateness to make some sort of material change, but that is part of the statute in terms of what you're empowering the commission to decide on. And that's set forth in the state legislation that the commission itself would be the deciding factor on granting approval or denial of certificates of appropriateness once a district or property is designated by council.
Okay. So once we designate it, they take over from there with all their appropriateness?
Correct.
Is what I'm reading in this structure? Okay, all right.
Unless the ordinance is amended.
All right, guys, all right. Any other questions, any other comments? All right, moving forward, guys. Committee updates.
Yes, sir, I've got several and I'll leave some of this thunder for you, council president. The rec board has had two meetings since our last council meeting. We had our, a special called meeting to discuss the five-year plan and I would just encourage you to look at the minutes of that because you don't want me to talk for an hour and a half about what we discussed, everything from A to Z, whether it's new gymnasiums, new baseball fields, softball fields, football fields, everything, everything you can name, you know, we have needs and wants in this city and the council, mayor will have to work hard to iron out, you know, what we can afford and what we can do and what, you know, are true, I think they're all true needs to the people that want them, but what we think that we can do to satisfy the most people in the city. And then the following week, we had a rec summit in which it was very informative and we had people from all the various sports throughout the city, especially youth sports. I would say there were some adult sports represented as well, but I kind of talked about, you know, how they're doing, their growth, the number of people that participate, what they anticipate their needs are, and the mayor and Pat put that together. That was excellent. That would, you know, I would encourage every council member, if you get a chance, to attend one of those rec summits because that was, that was very informative for me, even being on the rec board, hearing from the people that work every day with the various aspects of recreation in the city is very informative. So moving on, airport authority, you'll probably see a new funding agreement come before the council. Council president Martin and I and the mayor sat down and kind of put together some numbers of what we see. You know, our funding agreement between the city and the airport authority has basically expired at the end of the year and we had talked about level funding for this next year, so we weren't in a real big hurry to get something on the, you know, the first agenda this month, but, and I've talked to the airport authority, they're okay with that, with this level funding, but beyond that, a lot of good things are happening with the airport and I'd have to say that I'm probably as pleased with the airport and airport authority as much as I've been in the last 10 years. There's a lot of, a lot of good things going on there, I think some good leadership there. And so I think that we will, and I proposed this to the airport authority and they were actually very, it was very, very well received, they liked the plan, but it includes reducing their dependence upon us, number one, by some fairly sizable amounts over the next few years. And then it includes us clawing back the land that's on the west side of the airport because quite frankly, they're never going to be able to afford to do anything with that, whereas the city might be able to develop that west side as a light industrial park. And we've applied for grants for that and so we're working on that. And then thirdly, not only would we not be providing them with any funds past, you know, three or four years, they would be paying us back some of the money that they're allowed to keep, so we would be clawing back a few million dollars over what we've given them over the years. So, and they were very happy with this plan, so I think it's just a win-win for the city and the airport authority. So look for those numbers to come to you, if not the next meeting, maybe in a month, I'd say. And then I hear that the industrial development board is going to convene and have a meeting because we have an employer in town that, you know, if you add employees, you can get certain tax benefits and some tax abatements is what they're called. And so I don't have all the details on that, but one of our prominent businesses is looking to expand and they're looking for some assistance from the industrial development board. So pretty busy year, I think, once we got past the holidays, a lot of things started loosening up and kicking in this month. That's all.
Very good. Councilman Cogge?
Only update I have is just that the chocolate and champagne event at the Fair Hope Library is January 27th from 7:00 to 9:30 and that's a fundraiser put on by the Friends of the Fair Hope Library. They already be sold out of tickets, but I don't know, might be able to, I bet I'll get them, but it's a good fundraising event and they do a lot for the library and of course they're excited about the upcoming project they have, so. Support them if you get a chance.
Very good, very good.
You guys just heard about the historic preservation. That'd be all I got.
Yeah, so I guess where do we go from there with the historical preservation?
Fine-tune a couple of those dates and things that are council selections and then put it on the agenda?
Moving forward to the agenda, very good, very good. Councilman Boon?
Yeah, we had a personnel board meeting last Thursday and the council will soon be looking at some new additions and rules to the employee handbook to get some of the older rules out and make some more a little more specific. And then we're going to have a harbor board meeting Wednesday.
All right, very good, very good. Yeah, to piggyback on a little bit of Councilman Burrell's as far as the rec board meetings, you know, we have a lot going on with recreation. One of the things that Councilman Burrell, the mayor, myself, and that we kind of are looking forward to is this year we will try to implement or put money out or in the budget that we all voted on for, a master plan for that property that we have out there on 32 and 13, and I believe that's about 114 acres. So, you know, the future is bright, you know, we do have not a lot of needs as far as our kids are concerned and we're not overlooking that, but there's a lot of potential for our rec department to continue to grow. We also have to think about and, Councilman Burrell, appreciate this, where the families, as they come in for, if we have some sort of sports tourism, where they're going to stay or lay their head, we don't want to give all our tax revenue to DAF, no offense to Robin Lejeune and Christina, but, so all those things that we should get in a master plan and kind of put our heads together, we will include the public as usual when we do these things to have the public's input as far as our constituents are concerned. But looking forward to what we got as far as the future for our rec program. I'm also looking forward, I love what's happened, I'm on the advisory board at the airport. I love the way we're going with the airport, I think we have, no offense to anybody, I think we have our best body there that's actually running that particular organization right now. They're doing a lot of good things, including the public and getting the public involved. You know, Chip came to me the other day, we're thinking about actually having some type of mentorship with undeserved kids, with flying programs, things that we can include at that airport. There's a lot of potential there. The airport sooner than later will eventually fall off of our payroll and actually start being a profit to the city, which is always a good thing as far as our tax base is concerned and what we can do going back to our kids and other things that we need for our constituents. So there's a lot of good things going on in the city right now that we're proud of. I also met with Fair Hope Environmental Advisory Board, did not have a quorum, but they're also thinking about changing their time when they meet and some other things of how they can get involved. One of the things that I advised to them was to help the little girl that's trying to do the rainwater retention, you know, I think that's huge as far as conserving water. I think it's the way that we should go, I know everybody thinks I'm crazy, but I'm gonna stay crazy. I know everybody thinks I'm crazy, but I'm gonna stay crazy. I'm gonna stay crazy. So, I think it's very important that we teach our kids that we protect the things that God gives us, and I don't have any shame about that, so. But that's all I have, as far as my committees, guys. All right. All right, let's get into it. Department head updates? I'll call you, or we can go from the agenda. Brother Jeff?
Good evening, council. I got number 12, authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with Howard Technology. Howard Techno, let's see, is this microphone? Yeah, okay. Howard Technology will be coming in, doing an initial assessment for a larger project that we have budgeted for this year. I've got budgeted for this year's network refresh, so they'll be coming in and evaluating what we have, doing the security assessment, then making recommendations. So far, Howard Technology's done a great job, their vendor agnostics, they're not going to come and try to sell me a product, you know, a specific product. They're going to just sell me a solution that's best tool for the city. So, this is what this initial agreement's for, just to kick off that project. Any questions?
So, this is going to save us money in the long?
I don't know if it'll save us money.
Oh, okay.
It's just going to be refreshing our network equipment, our switching or routing or firewall, well, not a firewall, but our switching and routing throughout the city. And so, this is initial assessment of what we have currently and what direction we need to go.
Oh, okay. I thought I saw purchasing.
Yeah, so, we basically got to purchase their service to come in and do this.
I got you. Okay, I got it. I misread it. Yeah, I got it. Okay, very good.
Jeff, I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Not necessarily related to this one particular item, but I know that they had a summit or a conference.
In Point Clear.
Last week. Did you, you attended that?
I did, yeah.
Was that informative?
It was. It was a good conference. That's the second year they've done the conference. In both years, they've done it in Point Clear at the Grand Hotel. Yeah, a lot of good, a lot of vendors came, a lot of attendees were there. It was a good conference.
This is budgeted right, Jeff?
Yes, sir.
All right, very good. All right. Any questions, council? Anything else?
All right, thank you.
Evening. Hey, brother Patterson.
We got number 11. It's a budgeted item, come in here about four grand.
God bless you.
We did, we reached out to four different vendors on this. We had two actually bid on it. It's just, on items like this, it comes straight from the factory. It comes from real strong, so. And this is, it's a wire trailer, self-loading.
Very good. Yeah, I saw it.
Any questions?
This is budgeted, right, Ben?
Yes, sir. It is, and this is under budget.
Very good. I saw that.
Mayor?
Yeah.
We already got that. This is just a trailer to keep that wire loaded up, and we don't have to ask more.
To load the wire.
Ben, before you leave too, we got a few extra minutes in this.
Yes.
Mayor, you had bragged on the electric department to me last week. Can you just inform the council a little bit how we got through this, that really cold spell? We didn't, you know, there was a time, you know, a few years ago, we worried about our capacity and our substations. I think it's important to give us an update real quick, how well everything went, when we, when everybody had their heaters on for.
Right, so adding the new substations added the more capacity that we actually needed, and it put those substations in critical places where your lines aren't as long. We have the capacity to run, run the city really off one Twin Beach substation. So, now, that's why we're starting to work on our upgrades on the wiring. So, some of the wire's a little small, but it's still, we're still in a good spot. Once we get all that copper down, you know, it's like I said, just regular maintenance, we've been trying to maintain more, trying to trim more trees, so, we usually have a lot of outages during cold weather, especially when we had the rain and it started freezing, limbs start falling, going down. So, we, you know, just maintenance, and like I said, with y'all allowing.
We had no outages in this cold spell, right?
We had one or two, but it wasn't, it wasn't in the cold snaps. It was, it was after everything, so, we, the year before, we had a few outages. We're doing a lot better than some of our people around us.
Counterparts.
Three or four years ago, we were praying against a polar vortex.
That's right.
Yeah, we don't be like Houston, you know? What happened in Houston, we froze.
Major to everything that goes back is y'all allowing the substations. That's, that was the step in the right direction.
Yeah. Yeah, well, God bless you, man. Appreciate you.
Thank y'all.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Agenda item nine is not mine, but I'm definitely supportive of it. I do want to brag on Karen Bung and I have had the opportunity to work together for six and a half years now, and she has announced her retirement in the spring. And even though we have several administrative assistants, she has always kind of been her primary focus on supporting the public works operation. And when you consider in public works, 100 employees, and she keeps the, every evaluation gets processed and filed, and every disciplinary action, every communication, she manages the work orders, and if you've ever had to work on munis, it's not a fun thing. So, to have somebody to come in and shadow her for a period of time before her retirement would be beneficial to all, so you have my support on that one. I have agenda items number 10 and 13. 10 is a continuation. We discussed it several times, but I do want to make sure that I give the proper context. This is a pretty big number. It's still well under budget for the project total all, but to understand, this is our ADA compliance project, and as we were working through getting this project kicked off, the amount of time that we need to have our engineer there, not only to, we're going to literally be working in the front yards of 47 of our citizens' homes to address these problems, is making sure that we have the manpower there to coordinate all the contractor activity, to accommodate when folks can't get in their driveway, to have alternative parking and all that. And so, we asked them to make sure they included enough in this budget to cover us, as well as to be able to produce the necessary compliance reporting that we will do to the Department of Justice and Federal Highway, to get us out of this ADA compliance issue, and this amount does include the material testing of this job. I think we'll come in significantly under that amount, because it is based on hourly rate, and a very generous estimate there to make sure that we're covered. But I did want to address that, that it is, it is high in relation, not necessarily out of whack, but it's higher than what we normally see, but it's just to make sure that we have the CNI folks there during every, to coordinate the interaction with our citizens, because it's going to be, it's going to be a very interactive project, and that's going to start rolling out first of February, if everything hits on stride, and I'll be glad to answer any questions about that. On item number 13, and I do want to spend a little time on this, you may or may not be aware, the cart paving, path paving money has been, I think, budgeted, half of it was budgeted two years ago, the other half was budgeted a year ago. I know that it's been out for bid two additional, two previous times without any response, and Pat and Bobby Hall and kind of sat down with me and says, can you kind of help us? Why aren't we getting traction? So, we got out and really got detailed about what the job needed to be done. The good news is, we got four bids. Three of them are responsive, one of them, the lowest unfortunately, did not have the required bid bond and the required signed and notarized response, so it's an unqualified bid, so we can't consider it. But with that said, that bid, the low bid that is qualified is significantly higher than the budget. I do want to make sure you know what your rights are here. We advertise this as a by-hole, by-cart path repair project, based upon, if we did it all, this would be the tonnage, this would be the length, but we advertise this and let them know that it could be trimmed based upon budget parameters. So, basically, the only expectation the contractor has is that we plan to spend 100% of the budget if the bid is over what the budget amount is. So, your option tonight is, you can set the not to exceed of the $315,000 budget, and we'll make it go as far as we can. One of the assumptions we had to make is, we made, do the best effort possible without going and doing a full survey, that 20% of the surface areas of the golf cart paths were buckled due to root intrusion, undermining, or some other failure. So, we have in this $484,000 price is a full-depth repair of 20% of the surface area of the cart paths. I will tell you, I don't think it's that high. It's probably closer to 10%, but still, we wanted to make sure that we covered our bases so that when we finish this, everything is fixed. And I understand the, I think, a couple of cost drivers, is we did specify, after talking with Tom and others, is that, one, they can't operate heavy equipment on the fairways, they can't run any trucks, loaded or unloaded, over newly paved paths, so they would have to construct this in a way where they pick a starting point and they pave their way out, so they're never backing equipment over already paved pathways. So, there's some challenges there, and especially that they can't take shortcuts across fairways or anything like that, so those were all in consideration. I think that when Pat and I discussed this after opening the bids, that we wanted to ask for enough money to do 100% of it, but we realized budget considerations are there. So, if 315 is what we've got to spend, we'll take it and go as far as we can, and when that runs out, that's where the project will stop, and then they can plan and budget for the remainder at a future date.
Yeah, so, I got this, from what I thought that was the plan, I didn't know that we were going to ask, we have $315,000 budgeted, and what I thought the plan was, was to do what you said, as far as Plan A, was to do as much, the worst, as far as triaging, the worst areas, and complete as many of those as we could, and then come back as we budget again for the remainder. Now, if it's a, that's what was explained to me, so. Right, 315,000. So, that was the plan that council, that, you know, comments?
Richard, and my apologies, my computer's not downloading all of this bid. I don't know if it's just, it's a big file, looks like there's about maybe 61 pages, and for whatever reason, I'm not being able to download them. A couple of questions. Is the, are the cart paths going to be, is, are the paths themselves, when I say that, the path, where they're routed through, is there much modification to that? And let me tell you why I ask that question. There's some, you know, those golfers out there are pretty darn picky, and no matter what you do, you know, we're going to get some complaints that we didn't do enough, we did too much, or, you know, my golf ball's getting skinned up because I hit it on the cart path, and so, are they going to be in the same place? Are we, do we visually look at that and try to keep, you know, the amount of pavement that's exposed to a minimum? They do that with curves, but then, when you increase the distance, you increase the cost quite a bit, but I can't see the plan, in other words.
This is to resurface exactly where they lay geometrically, and I think one of the things that may be an opportunity, that there'll be areas, there, Mr. Hall and Tom, as well as Pat, have mentioned, that there are some section of trails that may be eliminated totally, so we wouldn't resurface those.
That's kind of where I was going. I think there's places where you won't need it, and I think there's places where you may have to shift it from one side of the fairway to the other for a number of reasons.
And the reason we just didn't look at doing any wholesale moving is, then you're kind of going back and having to build a base for the new to go on, and there's additional costs. So, the lowest cost was fixing what is there, and then, if there's areas that they think could be eliminated entirely, we won't resurface that, and then that could be just an in-house project to remove and re-sod those areas in the future date, so.
That's exactly my thoughts here. Good deal. I have another question about that. Oh, I know the other question. You talked about it was budgeted, 20% of that would have to be the roots removed, and who's going to oversee that? You said you don't think it'd be that, but who, is there somebody that says, well, it was only 10%?
So, basically, the contract documents, what we have, and as you know, we have two full-time right-of-way and construction inspectors, so this will be, we will inspect this job. We will go out with the contractor, and once the, as Council President Martin says, the triage trails are identified, what are the, number one priority down, then we will walk it, and we will, we will paint it up to the areas, and we'll measure and agree upon that so that we'll know exactly what's done, that you're going to cut, you're going to full, you're going to do full-depth repair from this line to this line, and it's this many square yards. So, we will do, that is part of the contract documents, is that we will mutually agree with the contractor and mark and identify those areas to be repaired. And of course, the team out at Quell Creek will be highly involved in that.
You have to do that holistically, right? Because you, you know, your worst one may be the farthest point from the clubhouse, and then your second worst may be back up on number one, but you know that the two holes adjacent to the furthest hole are going to be somewhere on that list in the budget, so you don't want to, you know, move people from one side of the course every day.
Here's the hardest challenge, and I think we got to look at this, and this, I'd be pretty firm about this, is that we will have the golf team identify by hole number, which is the worst, to which is the best. So, it'll be ranked 1 to 18, basically, and then there's some.
Then you can put the plan.
Okay. Because it would not make sense to just go out and do one, if we do a hole, the whole hole needs, the whole hole needs to be done. So, that's how we'll attack this, and wherever that 315 runs out, that's, you know, if we get, we get 12 out of 18 done, great, okay? If we get 14 out of 18 done, great, and then we can look at the, you know, the others in a future budget.
Is everybody, are we all in agreement with the not to exceed 315, or are we speaking of allowing the 484 to go through, which is the total amount of all 18 holes?
I was kind of thinking of splitting the difference.
I think we can get it done if you split the difference.
I think, I was, I just, Richard and I hadn't conspired on this.
No.
I was just kind of thinking.
First, we've had this conversation.
400, and just see what we can do.
400 is exactly splitting the difference. That we just turned out that way. And we might get it all done for that.
I'd be in favor of that.
Are y'all okay with that? So, what's the number, 400,000?
Fair enough.
There's a whole number.
We will stretch it as far as we can.
Nice round number.
It's a whole number. Yeah, a whole number. All right, guys.
Any other questions?
Best of luck to you, Richard.
Yeah. So, yeah, Richard, I just want to tell you, man, I love you, man, and we're praying for you. You know what I'm talking about. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
I'll ask everybody here to pray for Richard and his family.
All right, thank you.
Love you, buddy. Thank you. Yes. All right. Who we got? I'll call you. Ms. Creach.
Number seven was a request from the, for the purchasing department, requesting a part-time employee to come in. We're trying to, I know there's some bid issues that we've been running into on advertisement, and this way, I can move some clerical stuff around in the office that would allow us to have just some additional help in the purchasing office. It's just something that I know we've discussed in a couple of y'all's meetings. If y'all have any questions on that.
Counsel, part-time gig, 29 hours max. Okay. Thank you, Kim.
I have number nine on the agenda. Richard covered it pretty well. I second everything he said, but I thought I might have to come up here and tell you that it was for us.
Second.
If y'all have any questions, I'm here for you if you need it.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Chief?
Good evening.
Got the wineries?
Yep, I got 15 and 16, two applications for beer and wine. If y'all have any questions about that, everything checked out fine.
All right. What about 14 as well?
On the, it's on the, okay. The net's fine, too.
I thought it was more on the event side.
All right. Okay, and Mayor, are you going to speak on the interns, or? Okay. All right.
Come get up there, because they kind of worked out the money part of it, but this is the intern.
this year, and so that's kinda where it's kinda, it's, it's different than what we've ever done in the past.
The positions are still there, we just pulled a portion of the money.
Each department.
Yeah, of the budgeted, yeah, of the budgeted amount of money, we're not gonna utilize 100% of that budget money due to timing of filling those positions, so we'll have some savings in those positions, and so that's how these are gonna be filled, and, and going in the next year's budget to be able to set those, like, a seasonal position, just being, having them for the two months during the summer.
So just to ask, just, are these, are, are we, um, experimenting success with this intern program? I know we first started a couple of years ago, and I just wanna know.
We are, it was new for us last year, and again, they only participated in the gas department, several other utilities around, you know, the county have been doing it for several years. Um, the two that came through last year, one of them in particular was like the highest-ranked interviewee that they had amongst all the candidates, so he came to work here, did a great job, went to their graduation, and again, these are kids that we're trying to cultivate that relationship, since they don't wanna go to college, hopefully they'll come back, expose them to the city, expose them to a job that they're interested in, and we can do some on-the-job training and, and put them in a, put them in a job when they graduate from high school.
Yeah, very good, very good, that's good stuff. Always for helping the kids, that's for sure, this is a great program, I think it's a good opportunity, uh, counsel, for me personally, that's my opinion. All right, guys, I think we covered everything, um, we have a public hearing, it's number five, we wanna discuss that, number six, Hunter, I think you have a final adoption here.
Yes, just a quick one on that public hearing, typically don't ask this, but this is the one we needed to re-advertise to tweak a bit of the language, so I would ask that, if, if available, and we don't have any concerns, to suspend the rules and for final adoption tonight, um, we talked about that, I think, the last time when we, when we did, um, do that. It's, uh, kind of a concern for the development, so, the other one's final adoption, I think, pretty simple case.
All right.
We got all those changes in there?
Yes, sir. They were advertised.
Will you cover those in the meeting, or you wanna do it now?
I can, if, uh.
Yeah, we, yeah, we, we. Say we cover some of that now?
Sure.
Yeah, we got time, because, uh.
It's on one slide, um, so this was the additional language, uh, you know, the, in addition to the uses we discussed, this was really the teeth of the matter that dealt with the, the character of the existing building and how this, uh, moves forward, and, and the goal here was to allow flexibility to, um, expand on the uses that are, that currently we know are desired, um, but, but keep some, at least, especially from the street view, uh, some protections on that house, so it, or on the building itself. So the language, and, and you kinda have to start picking this part, and I appreciate Councilman Braille and, uh, Marcus, we, we spent a couple of hours debating, you know, uh, sometimes just a, a three-letter word, uh, and what was the appropriate word to use there. So I'll kinda break this down, uh, there's really a few, few points, the first part of this sentence, I think, tells why, why it's in there, is to preserve the character of the existing structure with the emphasis, emphasis on a view from Oak Street. The following restrictions apply to any new construction and additions only. So this is where we kinda break it down, the existing roof shall not be altered except for tie-ins to new roofs. So, um, at least currently, this is just a zoning request, but at least currently, if this were to, um, you know, a rear deck added on, or something along those lines, obviously you have to tie that into the existing structure, but, but we didn't wanna just pull the roof off, build a three-story square box, like the character of the building. The existing front facade shall not be altered except for minor changes such as paint colors. All additions, expansions shall be located at minimum to 10 feet from the lot line. I'm gonna pause there, because this is kinda broken down into two pieces, um, and you can, it's faint in this image, but the red lines are the property lines, this is not a survey, but it gets us close for demonstration purposes. The blue line there is approximately 10 feet away from the lot line reference, you can see kinda the street and where the white car is on top of the page. So, what we're ultimately saying, uh, by this is, any additions and expansions should be south of that blue line to preserve kinda the character from the street. So, there's room on the sides, mostly on the west side and the south, and the south side of the building, but even some on the eastern side of the building, any expansion should be in, located in those areas, and then it finishes up, those additions and expansions shall not extend higher than the roof of the existing structure. So it's a two-story building, any addition, expansion, should they so choose, could fall under that two-story, um, but, but in general, not affect the current, affect the appearance of the current structure, um, and make that go, go away completely. So that, that was the language as advertised that was additional, um, to address that. I have the, the rest, if we need to go back, but the, everything else was, did look at shopping centers, I can tell you, shopping centers, um, even after doing the math, even if they had three lot, the three lots adjacent to it, a shopping center is not a viable option.
Yeah, so the dark circles are things that they can put as far as use, correct? In our use table?
Uh, except for the, the, um, the list on the screen here, which we did talk about before, but that was the self-in, I mean, it, I will say this was the list, we, we spoke with them even before planning commission and said, because it's the central business district, um, we didn't really feel these uses would be appropriate, they agreed, I mean, there was really no, no heartburn with this list of uses. So, um, this, these add some additional restrictions than you would find in just the B2 zoning, in addition to the, the language we added about.
Yeah, so you make that, if you make that motion for final adoption, if you suspend with the rules, and if you make that motion, what does that says with, uh, staff recommendations and planning commission recommendations and under the new language? Just make sure we get that right.
This is in the ordinance, so if you adopt.
It's all amended now, so you can just, you can just adopt it as written.
As written, is amended now, but he just wants to.
Are the conditions in there as well?
Yep.
Yeah, he just wants to push it forward.
This, this was the, the conditions, we.
Those are included in the ordinance as well.
If you, if you ask for the, if you pass the, the ordinance right now, it includes the uses as well as that language.
I made sure, I looked, I did not see shopping center, which you just spoke on, but.
Yeah, so, so just to piggyback on what, I think what you're saying is not, so, some of this is excluded specifically, some of the is excluded based on the fact that you can't modify, you can't, yeah.
So that's why it wasn't in the original list, you know, with the parking requirements and the, just the, the flat, um, space needed, so.
Yep, yeah, okay, guys. All right, all right, I'm, I'm, Jimmy, I know you had a little heartburn about this.
No, I'm good with it.
You okay?
Yeah, I'm good with exactly how he's written it.
Okay, very good.
It took a while, but then we found ourselves after, instead of, you know, it growing, then we were like, like the roof issue, we're just making it higher than the original roof, they can't go up and make it a square box.
Yeah, we had to kinda get, I mean, we had, I was getting afraid of how long this was gonna take to write, because it was getting real wordy, so.
But sometimes you gotta be.
Yeah, sometimes that bravery is, uh, brilliant, you know, so.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We got six minutes, guys. We'll, um, we'll end this work session, we have six minutes, we'll see you back here at 6 o'clock.
Yeah.